Councilman Rick, can you hear us okay?
Yes, sir, I can.
Got you there, thank you.
Good evening, it is six o'clock, I am calling to order the May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five Fountain City Council Meeting, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Thompson?
Here.
Councilmember Hinton?
Here.
Councilmember Geek? Councilmember Estes? Councilmember Hersberg? Councilmember Duncan?
Present.
And Mayor Pro Timmerick is joining us virtually, Mayor Pro Timmerick?
I'm here.
I have seven members present.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have made a slight adjustment to our agenda in how we're going to be handling things, we have moved public to be heard up in front of presentations instead of behind them. And we did that because if people are coming to our council meeting to speak and they are on their way home from work and they haven't had dinner yet, we want them to be able to come and express their concern and then get on their way home. So that they're not sitting here, if we have a long presentation that's like twenty, thirty minutes or more, they're not, if they want to choose to stay for it, they can, but they're not stuck here until, you know, potentially forty-five minutes until we get to public to be heard. So, we're doing it to be courteous to our citizens. And I do have one card, and if anybody else wants to say something, please grab a card real quick and get it filled out. So that takes us to item four, public to be heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda, council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to five minutes or less. And I do want to tell you, we do have, when the five minutes is up, we do have just a gentle buzzer to remind you when your time is up, because it's kind of hard to keep your eye on the clock up there when you're, when you're trying to speak to us up here. So you will hear that when your five minutes is up, and it's just a reminder to, to wrap up your comments quickly. So, that takes us on to the only card I have tonight. And I have it from Mr. Linder, and he wants to talk about the last council meeting, and Mr. and Mrs. Cuff. So, Mr. Linder, if you could come down and to the mic, please. And middle button, turn on the microphone, and state your name for the recording, please.
Al Linder. But first, Mr. Hinton had told me there was going to be an announcement, didn't you say that just now?
I did, I did tell you that Timmerick Estes is going to read something.
Well, I'd, I'd rather wait until that's done before I have to say what I say, because I might just walk out, I just want to hear what's going on. Mrs. Geek knows what the problem is with me tonight, Deitra Duncan knows what the problem is with me tonight, and it's about the Cuff family. And if your statement's going to be about that, I'd appreciate to hear that first.
That would be part of your time. That would be part of your time, this is your time to speak, if you want to give part of your time to her, that would be giving up part of your time, otherwise she will be giving that statement when it's time for our comments.
Well, I'd rather do that, I'll give her my time, because my words might be very upsetting.
Okay, thank you. It's up to you, whether you want to do it now, or you want to wait. Right. Have to get my glasses. As a city, we are legally required to follow established guidelines that ensure every member of the public is given the same amount of time to speak during meetings. This is not only a matter of fairness, but also a legal obligation that protects the rights of all individuals and shields the city from potential legal challenges or claims of unequal treatment. We truly recognize that many citizens come forward not simply to speak, but because they are carrying deep frustration, hardship, or even trauma. Especially when facing an overwhelming and painful neighborhood situation, the like the one Mr. and Mrs. Cuff so bravely shared with us at the last meeting. I want to personally say that my heart goes out to them, I genuinely feel for the weight that they are carrying, and I sincerely pray that their situation is, is resolved swiftly with justice, fairness, and a sense of peace for everyone involved. Please know that your pain has been heard, and we stand with you in hoping for a better outcome. As a council member, I truly strive to encourage all citizens, no matter which side of the situation they're on, to treat one another with kindness, grace, and respect. Even when tensions are high or emotions are heavy, we are all neighbors, working together to build a better, stronger community. And it's so important that we avoid gossip or judgment, and instead offer support, understanding, and compassion to those facing difficult challenges. I also want to share that as council members, we are deeply affected when we see painful situations unfold in our community. While we know there are limits to what we can change, we continually strive to do what we can to improve our community and make it a better place for everyone. We must uphold the integrity of the speaking time and the fairness of the process, but we also work hard to approach every speaker with genuine compassion and care. I ask for grace and understanding toward those of us on the council, as we do our best to treat every speaker fairly and uphold the rules to protect the integrity of the process. Together, by showing patience and respect for one another, we can help move our community forward with compassion and unity. Mr. Linder, did you wish to?
Well, that wasn't enough for me. For that night, you did not show any compassion, Mayor. And I don't really believe you're deserving to be the mayor. And that's what I'm here for, I wish you'd resign, I wish you'd go, and I wish the next four years you lose. And I'm going to do everything in my power to make you lose. And as far as the rest of it, I'm going to say is, you have people sitting up here, and I was ashamed that none of you stood up and, and fought for that woman. Because that lady could have been anybody's family member, it could have been your mother, your mother, your mother, and nobody said nothing except Todd. And he's the one that saved the day. So, when you talk about compassion, you're up here and you're saying Happy Mother's Day to everybody, and the poor lady, I wanted to hear what she had to say, but you wouldn't allow it. You cut her off, you made it sound, you just stopped everything. I wanted to know. You know, you've been around for sixteen years, and it's enough, 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 enough with you.
Thank you, Mr. Linder. All right, that's the only card we have for public to be heard, and everybody has a right to come up here and say whatever they want, and sometimes you like it and sometimes you don't, and it is the way it is. There is a process we follow, there's a court process, and it's really hard, when you are the person that's in the midst of the trial, it is hard to walk, watch it go through. But the chief has met with her, I, Todd and I have had conversations with her a couple times before the meeting, the city attorney has met with her. And we get these situations about, I'd say about every eighteen months, where we have a really tough situation going on, and we do our best, but there is a court process that every single person is entitled to in America. And we are the legislative body, we are not the judge body, and we are not going to cross that line, I've stated it before. We are not going to become judge and jury, that's not our job, it's inappropriate, and that's when we get in court, is when we cross that line. And so as hard as it is to hear our citizens come in, and I feel for Mrs. Cuff, and I'm sorry, and their family, and it's a horrible situation, but we are doing the best we can. Mr. Evans?
And just Mayor, I want to reassure to everyone, we're not done either, we're going to bring every resource we can to take care of that problem, we're not done. So, things are in the works this week, as we speak.
I have not been sitting up here for sixteen years, so. Alrighty, takes us on to presentations, item four point one, Girls of the West, please come on down and tell us some fun stuff about the rodeo going on.
All right, I'll try to lighten it up a little bit, we sure appreciate you guys having us. I'm Greg Budwein, I'm the Executive Secretary for the Range Riders. Thank you for your time tonight, we really appreciate it, you're going to hear some really cool presentations tonight, and mine is not one of them. I just want you to know and understand that as a Range Rider here in our community, our mission is simple but pretty powerful. We're to champion the iconic Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo, fuel our Range Rider Foundation, and keep the flame of the Western heritage burning bright. It all started in nineteen forty-nine with Mr. Ken Brookheart and Everett Conover, they teamed up, a couple of guys got together, a couple of local businessmen, they got on horses and rode around Pike's Peak. And man, did they kick something off. We've been going for seventy-six years, this year, we're over two hundred strong, we'll have quite a few riders, quite a few people, which is really cool. And we didn't stop there. We live the cowboy way, and we do it all the time, and we do it every day. If you haven't heard, we have a facility called Latigo, it's a forty-five acre horse lover's paradise for kids, it's really cool, it's out east of town. This is where we teach the next generation the cowboy way, where we work hard, we're honest and respect each other, all while having a pretty good time. Our very own Pike's Peak Rangerettes train there, these young ladies are the heart and soul of Latigo and the Pike's Peak Range Riders. If you've ever seen them ride, you know they bring the house down when they open a rodeo or perform a parade, they're girls from twenty-eight, excuse me, from twelve to twenty, and they ride in a group, and they are some amazing girls. They ride in our parades, they do a lot of stuff on the front range, and they're pretty special to watch, so pay attention this summer, because it's coming. Emma, who's going to speak later, who's way better than me, she's our Girl of the West and very proud of what she does, she does a lot of stuff for us to promote the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo. And she spends countless hours in our community doing that, and we really appreciate that. And we've added, in the last few years, I think about the last eleven years, we added the Pike's Peak Special Rodeo. So we allow kids from the therapeutic riding centers to compete at the Pro Rodeo Hall of Fame, and if you haven't seen it, you should come watch that, it's a very interesting, good time, where we can get kids on horseback that would otherwise never be horseback, and it is fun to watch. And because we're here tonight, we'd be tickled to have you out to Colorado Springs to the street breakfast, everything starts on June eighteenth. That kicks off our rodeo presentation, the Range Riders, all two hundred of us will be leaving town horseback, and we'd love to have you, so please come join us, that's all I got, thank you very much.
Good evening, I'm Lori Carroll, the Vice President of the Pike's Peak or Bust Board of Directors, thank you for the opportunity to be here today. Our Girl of the West will tell you a little bit about our history and what to expect at this year's rodeo, so I'll be short, she's the one that everybody's here to listen to. This community event is supported by thousands of local fans and sponsored by many area businesses and organizations, as well as regional and national sponsors. We're thankful for all that support to our event, as we honor Western heritage and support our local military and our families, that mission is at the core of everything that we do. Our rodeo has grown in national visibility and attracts attendees from all fifty states, as well as visitors from several countries outside of the U.S. We're proud to showcase the Pike's Peak community and all it has to offer to our fans and contestants. The Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo is led by an all-volunteer board of directors and supported by over four hundred volunteers. Many of us are veterans, and we greatly appreciate our local military and their families' sacrifices, and we're passionate about giving back to them through the proceeds from the rodeo and all our other events. We look forward to seeing you at the rodeo this year.
Hi, I'm Corliss Palmer, I'm a twenty-four-year volunteer of the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo, and my job is to direct the Girl of the West. It's a fabulous job I have. As such, I schedule and escort her to about a hundred and fifty appearances between the middle of May and the middle of July. So we have several going on every day, and we enjoy every bit of it. The Girl of the West program started in nineteen, geez, nineteen twenty-two, with Dawn Norris as the first one, and that's been a hundred and three years ago. It was way before Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo started in nineteen thirty-seven, but there were other rodeos in that area, and that started way before Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo. The Girl of the West is chosen, among others, in a competition to earn the title, it's held during the week of rodeo. This year it's on July tenth, but the competition consists of horsemanship, appearance, interviews, and an impromptu speech that she gives at the Past Girls of the West luncheon. In front of all the sponsors, board of directors, Rangerettes, and other people, and the Past Girls of the West, so it's kind of nerve-wracking for her to give, she has ten minutes to learn a one-and-a-half-minute speech, but she doesn't know any topic until that day. So we also have rodeo posters and some brochures in the back, if you could pass those around in your city, we would really appreciate it. The Girl of the West this year, two thousand twenty-four, five, is Emma Considine, she's the daughter of Craig and Mandy Considine. She's been deeply involved in the rodeo for many years, she was Kit Carson Riding Club Queen for two thousand twenty-two, twenty-two and two thousand twenty-three, and the Elizabeth Stampede Queen last year. She has been involved in lots of activities for the last six years with the Kit Carson Riding Club, including their drill team. She graduated from the Village High School and attends the University of Wyoming, majoring in business marketing. And there are a few times she likes to be outside with her brothers, rafting, skiing, and riding horses with her friends, she rides a pretty palomino horse named Sandy, please enjoy her presentation.
Hi, my name is Emma, I'm the Girl of the West, and I serve as the proud ambassador of the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo. I'm excited to let you know, pro rodeo world champions and rising stars, from the U.S. and Canadian circuits, and national champions from Mexico. We'll be here to compete for over one million dollars in payouts. It's all happening at the NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo, July eighth through the twelfth in Colorado Springs. Two hundred and fifty contestants will be bringing their A-game to the scenic and historic Norris Penrose Event Center to compete in bareback riding, breakaway roping, steer wrestling, tie-on roping, team roping, saddle bronc riding, barrel racing, and bull riding. Finals will be held on Saturday night, July twelfth, when the national circuit champions will be crowned. There are two reasons why I am both proud and passionate about this rodeo. First, this legacy event reminds us to preserve and celebrate our Western heritage and values, all while hosting the best in the sport of professional rodeo. I'm proud to say I was raised with these values, this is my heritage. And second, I'm grateful we honor our local military at every performance. U.S. Army, SMDC and MDA on Tuesday night, Fort Carson Fourth Infantry Division on Wednesday evening, first responders and three hundred and second airlift wing on Thursday evening. Guard Reserve units and educators at the Friday matinee, Space Night on Friday evening, the United States Air Force Academy at the Saturday matinee, and NORAD U.S. Northcom on Saturday evening. The Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo has been proudly giving back to, to our local military and their families since nineteen forty-six, and I am passionate about that mission. There's nothing quite as exciting as seeing professional rodeo in person, when the caliber is so high and competition is so fierce. You've got to be here to experience it, and we have seven, count them, seven performances to do so. The NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo takes place July eighth through the twelfth, with evening performances Tuesday through Saturday, and matinee performances on Friday and Saturday. Evening performances begin at seven PM with grounds opening at four PM, matinee performances start at noon with grounds opening at ten AM. Want to skip the traffic? Of course you do, we have free garage parking and free shuttles to the rodeo and back to your car for every performance. Kick back and enjoy the ride. You'll want to arrive early, grab a bite to eat, and check out the apparel and other Western fare our vendors have for sale. Find more fun in the PPOBR fan zone, with kid-friendly activities, rides, mutton busting prelims, and more. We also have plenty of vendors, our feedlot tent, and the beer and wine corral for adults. Be sure to stick around after the rodeo for autographs from the contestants, Rangerettes, visiting royalty, and me, your very own Girl of the West. Then, live music and dancing away in the Coors Roadhouse saloon. When you see our awesome pink ram truck from Perkins Motors all over town, please know I'll be waving, hope you'll be waving back. We'll be heading out to represent our rodeo at businesses, military installations, and community events, and stopping by to see some of our generous sponsors who helped make this event possible. Speaking of community events, please plan to join us- Speaking of community events, please plan to join us bright and early on June 18th in downtown Colorado Springs for the annual Colorado Springs Western Street Breakfast and the official send-off for the Pike's Peak Range Riders annual ride. Then, get ready for the best in professional rodeo at the NFR Open at the Pike's Peak or Bust rodeo, July 8th through the 12th at the Norris Penrose Event Center. Tickets are selling fast. Get yours online today at pikespeakorbus.org. I'll see you there. I can't wait. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm always so impressed every year with the memory you guys have, and we all used to have it, didn't we? No, I don't think I ever had it that good. No. Okay, but thank you very much, and I appreciate you coming down here. I know this is your second one today because I believe you're with the commissioners today. So when you said 150, and how many days, you got to do at least two, if not three, a day. So thank you. Anybody else have any comments about the rodeo or anything? Go ahead.
I just want to extend a thank you out to the Range Riders and all of you to come tonight. I used to participate with the Pike's Peak Therapeutic Riding Center, now Stable Strides, and the support you guys give them. Fantastic. It's another piece of our community that supports our soldiers with suffering with PTSD using horses to help treat that and any individual that has a disability that would like to be involved with horses. It's a great program, and a lot of it is because of you guys helping them out, so I really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you very much for coming down tonight. Hopefully, this is your last one today. I didn't hear what he said. Starting slow, okay. Thank you very much. Thank you. All righty, and that takes us on to the Wayfinding System Signage Plan Phase III Design Scope and Final Delivery Timeline. Ms. Bailey.
Evening, Mayor, Council, Public. Kimberly Bailey, Economic Development Director for the City of Fountain. Our team is pleased to be with you tonight to conclude our Phase III implementation approach of the findings of the master plan for wayfinding. That includes myself, Nate Scholl, under the specialist team, and then Ms. Kristin Seifer with Michael Baker Consultant Team that you awarded the project to back in February of 2024. So we're going to give you a quick drill down of where we've been, how we got here, and then we're going to give you the showcase of the final design product that was, you know, exuded from a lot of public outreach, as well as a very proactive steering committee who participated in this endeavor. So as you can see, our timeline has been in three phases. We are with you in August to present the campaign launch. Then we went through the public engagement, and we came back to you in February with what those conclusive findings were from the public outreach. And then we are with you tonight, as well as in June, for a two-step process for the final adoption of the master plan. There is no action tonight. Tonight is strictly a presentation of the final product materials. Your adoption and your action items will come in June timeframe. Just want to be clear about that. Also, there is a value positioning statement. We are less than 10% adequately signed to properly navigate our residences, our transitional military that goes through a PCOS installation change order every two years. So that really means we have a new population influx every two years, and they need better navigation and awareness of findings. And then our visitors, you know, we're a very attractive region, and the Pike's Peak has a county, and so we do have a lot of transitional visitors throughout our community as well. I don't know if I control or Buzzie you control. Thank you. So the outline is, in last strategic cycle that ended in December of 2024, you instituted a D-15 strategic objective was to update and implement a new master plan direction. Under your new strategic plan, which is what is behind me in the prioritization, you have identifying the stepping stones to start implementing some of those findings, okay? So tonight, we are presenting to you D-15. We are closing out that master plan approach project, and then we will step you through that implementation measure recommendation in June. Knowing that in this planned effort, it was 37% co-funded matched by FIRA since we identified the U.S. 85 corridor as a litany corridor that Dutch all five business districts. And then the implementation thereof, under the new strategic plan, is really based on a 10-year model, and we will explain more of that detail in the June presentation. Our growth has been pretty astronomical, as you know, as council, and our community feels the influx of population. We have grown substantially, double digits every single year. And then add a base on top of it that adds another sister city component. We do need to address some of the infrastructure undersignage and public safety. In addition, we reside in a county that is the top two growing counties in the state. It is El Paso County, and it is Well County in North Colorado. So the influx of population is not going to ease. It's just going to get more exasperated as I'm looking at my chief of police who has to handle that traffic management on a day-to-day basis. Next slide, please. So where we were in our meeting agenda, we're going to cover to you the Phase III status, which is what we came from Option 1 and Option 2 that went out to the public during a five-month period. Those kind of merged into your final design that is being presented tonight. That has been finalized. There is no more input to the design scope, but we're more than welcome to welcome comments or any personal thought as to how we got to this point of discovery. We will talk to you about the family set of design. There are things that are based on vehicles. There are things that are based on pedestrian. There are things based on just public right-of-way accents under public safety. Then we did do a large swath with our partner agencies. We will recap with you as well. Business development and business economics was huge under the RFP that we issued back in the late 2023 cycle. And as behind me on your new strategic objectives, number three is support local business development. This pairs very nicely with that initiative. Then finally, the supplementals that come out of the overall packet that will be presented by Michael Baker in their disclosure of master planning and how we conclude the process thereof. Next slide, please. So with that said, signs are to be supportive of business development. These were the aspects under the RFP that was issued by the city. The second one is also clarifying points of entry and create an arrival sequence. Whether you're coming from the east side of Mark Shuffle, you're coming in off of North 8587 out of Southern Colorado Springs, or you're coming up at a pueblo at exit 128, you do not have geographical boundary of understanding where you just entered into. And that is really a detriment to business development and business sales revenue, unfortunately. There's not enough guidance to drive those practitioners to storefronts and understanding how we can turn that economy cycle around. The last thing is improve navigability and addressing those major thoroughfares. How many of us have been in a road where somebody just goes across three lanes of traffic because they didn't know they needed to make a left? Or they literally stop in the right-of-way of the road and wait till there's a moment to egress over? Those are all public safety issues. And the more advanced warning notice you can give in the progression of coming up onto a major intersection, the better it is for everybody fundamentally. Next slide, please. So in the goals of the public survey outreach, and these goals were all substantiated by the steering committee that was put together for this project initiative, there were four items that resonated, and these are listed in the support of advocacy that was resonated as well. So number one was it must be highly legible. Number two, must be super cost-effective. Number three was easy to maintain. Don't give me something that I have to re-strip and redo every single time. Make it so it's adaptable to our growing urban growth boundaries of our community as well. And then it could be creative. Have it be somewhat stylistic of the City of Fountain, what we represent, what has been baked in other master plans. How can all those things be applicable? So with that said, we had a little over 1,000 in public input, and that was really, really good because we did a lot of pop-ups in the field where we knew we could grab the community at points of activity. We just didn't lean on a public survey. Public surveys were really waning coming out of COVID, and it was really important that we took the extra mile and got immersed in the community at local events and really brought that bandwidth to the table. And with that, I'll transition that over to Ms. Kristin Seifer, who is really the one that did a lot of the pop-ups and is the architecture and the design scope going forward that will be presented.
Thank you. Oh, okay. Well, let me, ta-da. Was that you or me? Okay, woo, step one. So I wanted to talk a little bit about how we got to the final designs, just very quickly. So we had two design options going into that outreach period where we had over 1,000 touchpoints. The first one, the things that people really loved about it is that it was eye-catching. They did appreciate the design, especially how unique it was. It felt like it spoke to Fountain. The icon of Fountain was something that people responded very strongly to, this idea of being able to have a literal icon for Fountain that looked like the word Fountain. They really appreciated the angles and then the all-American design of it, which we had to unpack a little bit, like what does that mean? It came down to things like symbolic colors and stars and stripes. And then for Option 2, people really liked the color of this. There was more color baked into this option. They also appreciated its simplicity, especially in regard to cost savings. And then the materials and the legibility all checked those boxes that Kim mentioned, like that were key community touchstones throughout our process. So as we took all that input and we started looking at some of the icons that we could pull forward that people responded to the most strongly. So the five stars speak to the all-American city. That's, it's on the, it's on the wall, so that really helps me out. Thank you. Like the five-star Fountain all-American city. We also have five military bases in the community, and there are conveniently five commercial districts that we're trying to draw attention to as well. So the five stars, beyond people just resonating with it as a symbol, did have some ties back to meaningful connections in the community. And like I said, the Fountain icon, people really liked that regardless of its iteration. So you can see that there's sort of the more swoopy version, and then there's the more architectural version. People just liked that it looked like a fountain. And I will say this about symbology. They really, when you think about a signage family, signs are very functional in many ways, but they also tell a story about place and can really be a unifying element in regard to like community identity, community cohesion. If you feel like you see yourself in this design, it's a way to not just better connect to it, but better celebrate who you are. So it was really a delight. We don't always find this, but it was really a delight to find that we did have some really resonating symbols in Fountain that we could incorporate into the signage to make it more impactful and meaningful for the community. This is just about the cost effectiveness and the durability. So when we chose the materiality, and this is just from the bid set that we are providing at the end of the project, but it details what materials we're using. We made sure that they were both cost-effective but also durable. So looking at things like powder coating for elements that we expect to stay the same with these signs year after year, whereas some of the messaging, we would recommend like a painted surface and some retro reflective lettering, just so if you shine it at night, you get information back without having to illuminate it. And then as much as we can locally sourced or naturally present, most of these materials can be found in the West. We, of course, are in a transition period now where our materials are, costs, like the costs are up. There's everything from everywhere, but like this is, has been for many, many years, like a solid way to spec materiality that is appropriate for Colorado. So we went with those materials. And then we also looked at the types of signs needed, so these just graphically show kind of everything from sort of that Pedbridge-type stuff to district boundaries, destinations, vehicular signs, ped signs. It's really a soup-to-nuts project. And like Kim said, when we're talking about safety, we think a lot about not just how safe it is when you're driving, but signs really address that intersection between user movements. So I'm a driver, you're a biker. I'm a driver, you're a walker. I'm a biker, you're a walker. Those transitions and those, the clarity of those systems and how they intersect is something that we want to make sure that we get really right. So again, like the sign types, when you look at across the districts, you're going to see that we've got a little bit of each sign type in every district. And as far as priorities go, these really came out of the feedback that we received from the community, from the steering committee. Also, just the, you know, if we're going to use cost-effective dollars the most effectively, the recommendations that will get you the most bang for your buck so that we can improve things like safety, comfort, recognizable community emblems, ease of navigability. And in regard to costs, so we really, this was something that we penciled, penciled, penciled over and over again to get to a place where these costs are one of the best in my, like, embarrassed to say, but you know, since like 2005, focused on humble signage. These costs I'm really standing behind and proud of. Of course, we do have the volatility in the materials market right now, but that will probably settle down. And even if it doesn't, we have produced some really, really cost-effective signs here while still achieving the things like design and, you know, the characterful elements. But we did focus very, very, very much on cost, just because, as Kim also said, you really only have like 10% of the signage you need, which means that like that lift to get you to a place where it's easy to understand how to get around, it's safe to understand how to get around. You do require more signs, so wanted to be really careful about the costs. And then in regard to priorities and design, we started with these vehicular directional signs. And you can see that dependent on the speed that you're traveling in your car, these messages need to be bigger or smaller. So if we look at like the one on the far left, we're looking at you're in Old Town. So the, can I walk over there? Is that like not okay because of the mic? Well, I would just point, okay? And there's a laser thing, isn't there? Oh, the green? Okay, I will not point in anybody's eyes on purpose. Oh, my gosh, that's so satisfying. All right, so, right. So for every vehicular directional sign, where you are in town, it says where you are. Each place has a color. Then because of, we went with C dot standards regardless of C dot corridor, which limits our amount of messaging to three messages that have three icons that explain what they are. So depending on what the sign is, we've got destinations, and then we've got those iconic things that really help transcend language barriers, transcend confusion in general. Some destinations have funky names, and you're like, what the heck is that actually? We use those icons to be that breadcrumb to get you through. And then as we step down, you can just see that the messaging gets a little bit less, also the design too. So I'll cover that in just a sec. But then again, these are both 25 mile per hour, and you can see that the messaging is the same size. You guys surely shouldn't have given me this green clicker thing. The messages are the same size. But then as we get down to like 15 miles per hour, 15 miles per hour is where we are here in Old Town. And we don't want to have a giant sign. We don't need it. The speeds are very low. And so we've knocked down both the size of the text as well as the amount of iconic messaging because it creates a nice balance between, you know, the cost and the importance of telling people where they are. All these big signs have all that additional information. So once they're actually in Old Town, they've already seen that Town Hall's this way, the library's this way, Aga Park is this way. So again, and then the other piece about design that I wanted to point out very quickly is you can see that we've got different levels of design here. We've got a simple pole, which we've done for the smaller one too. Then we've got a little bit fancy-pantsier. These two that have something on the bottom, this is very, this is used very seldomly. It's really just at the entrance to a unique area like Old Town. We'd have one of these just to announce, hey, you're here. It's part of that gateway look and feel. And then for the secondary, like Old Town is, Old Town is a very important part of town, so like having that extra messaging is nice. But we also have some entrances that are like coming from the east to west. We don't want to spend too much budget, but we'd still like to announce that, hey, you've arrived. So we have this as an option. It's also a cost savings so that if materiality just ever comes down again, and here we are, we can go with this if we want to be fancy and lose some of this, so you don't have to have it everywhere. And then again, simple poles, very cost-effective. And like I said, at night, to keep costs down, we're just using what we call retro reflective. If you've ever seen a C dot sign, green C dot sign with the letters that shine at night, that's exactly what we're doing here. So we are applying those so that as you drive around, you can see this information that we want to call attention to, which is the destination, the directions, the icons, where you are, in this case, Old Town. And then if we want to have something at the bottom, we can have that be retro reflective as well. And then color is the other thing that we really used to differentiate where you are in Fountain. So Fountain, again, has five different, unique districts plus parks and open space. And we wanted to make sure that we could say very quickly, people use color to navigate because it's, it's just easy. It's an easy shorthand. So even though, you know, we know that, understand that you could rebrand, and maybe these colors aren't your final colors, but the message here is that we're going to choose different colors for different districts, and then we're going to make sure that we're consistent with those colors as you move through the district. No matter what kind of sign, we've got No matter what kind of sign we've got, this is auto-directional, but if we have these larger signs that are gateway signs, you can see, hee-hee, you can see right here, we've got that Old Town. And I apologize, Old Town is like one of our sort of brownie red colors that doesn't really pop, but we've got some, that's where the color will change. So if you're not in Old Town, if you're in gateway, it's going to be red or whatever color you decide after any potential rebrand. And then when we think about boundary signs, we're also trying to be cost-effective here. So it's a kit of parts, which means that we've got this tall version, which can stand alone all by itself. There are places where this is appropriate. There are also places where we don't need to make such a bold statement. So we have this option, which again pulls some of those pieces that you saw in some of the vehicular directional signs. This would be illuminated, which would be different than vehicular directional signage. And then we've got these pillar options where we can like vava-voom it up as much as we would like, because there are some places in town where legitimately Fountain needs some vava-vooming, like, hey, you've arrived. So at nighttime, we just want a soft glow for these. We don't want them to be shouty, but we definitely want to take advantage of like the cost-effectiveness of like LED strips and the fact that you own your own power and being able to really, especially for these district boundary signs and the gateway signs, you know, bang for your buck, so that people can see them at night and they are celebratory for the community. And this is kind of how you would start to parcel them out. So if we wanted to have something that was not just the individual pillar, pillar, only pillar, we can start to add some of these either, you know, very much adjacent to the sign or because 85 is such a long, narrow corridor, just a little bit of a breadcrumb leading up to some of these gateways, we'll give people a notice needed to understand that they've entered somewhere special. And again, at night, these would be illuminated, unlike the retro reflective signs. And then for our third priority of sign, we've got this park trail and open space sign package. So this is a destination sign from Metcalf. The information here, you can see it, we're taking the same forms. These really are consistent throughout the sign palette. They are a very recognizable symbol that alludes to the mountains, that alludes to the optimism of the community, but we're taking that and saying, okay, we've got our main message up here, it closes at dusk. And then we've got the opportunity, especially in a place like Metcalf, it has its own destinations within it. Nesting within it is the arena, nesting within it is the link to the trails, et cetera, et cetera. So we have this opportunity right at the boundary to say, hey, you're here, but like you're also, if you're looking for these things, they're here too. And then on the back, we've just got a really discreet scan me for information that takes you to Parks and Trails website. And then we do have space for a map if needed. And all of this stuff is direct printed. And so at night, it still has the ability, if I can do it, yeah, to have that retro reflective piece, but because parks close at dusk, this is really just for awareness, not that we expect people to be using the parks at night. So we didn't want to illuminate these, we just wanted to give them that retro reflectivity, mostly just for awareness, like I said. And then when we get down into the parks and trails, we've really come up with two primary types of sign. We've got the along the trail sign, and that's this little one. And it relies solely on those emblems and arrows to say, hey, you're either, I'm reassuring you, this thing that we said is going to be here is going to be here, or this is a subtle change place. Like you understand that there's something that I might want to get here that is restroom and something over here, but you usually have kind of line of sight where these are located too. There's definitely more of these than these. These are where we're looking to connect to another trail system. So like where Fountain Creek Trail meets Cruz Gulch Trail, we want to make sure that we're calling attention to that connection, because you really do have a very deliberately connected set of trails throughout Fountain. Like surprise, surprise, when I started the project, I was like, there's no way, but you actually do, and it's just awareness markers that illuminate these, like how do you get all around the entirety of Fountain using a trail system? So that was great. And again, these are just retro reflective at night, and it's mostly because of winter time and people do use the trails for commuting and getting to school and back usually. And then to keep costs down, we've used the same for these PED signs. So we have a little bit more jazzy stuff for PED signs, but it's the same kind of kit of parts where we've got the post, we've got the destination, we've got an emblem for the destination, we've got the amount of time. It's a little blurry here because it's small in real life too, but we've got the amount of time it takes to get there. And this is to encourage health, it's also to encourage connectivity. If you are a walking person, thank you. I love that you can zoom. And then just a couple of places in the PED network, like up at Mesa Ridge and here at Old Town, we have the ability to add this info panel that carries more information than just the QR code. But the QR code is what we're doing for most information, because it's the most cost-effective and most people are very familiar with how to use those these days. So they're a great way to save money while also sharing information that can get updated on the back and without having to like print a new map. So I really recommend those, because they're helpful. And then for our fifth priority, we've got the Interstate 25 Gateway. And this is a funny story. So there's a lot of love for both of these. And so we were supposed to pick just one, but we couldn't. It was literally 50/50. So you got both. I, I think it's going to be, it's going to be, when you get to priority five, maybe you'll have some clarity that we couldn't get, but from a cost perspective, they're much of a muchness. So whichever one wins the race when we get to that place, that's great. And then from a cost-saving standpoint, we've also investigated reusing the existing foundational elements that are part of these I-25 gateways. So you've already got some stuff underground that we can hook up to ideally. I mean, we don't have engineered drawings, so you know, we can't say 100%, but we did have our engineers go out, look at the drawing set that Kim provided and said, yep, at least for this part of the sign, we can reuse that. And then for this element or this element, I don't mean to show favoritism here, we'll do have, we'll have to do a new footer, just because it has a different type of wind load. It's not that like linear heavy. It stands up tall, and so we'd want to make sure that it has the correct engineering footer so that it's all good to go. And then I think Kim's going to talk about the partner stuff, because that was a really important part of it. And I will give it back over and take my shot.
Thanks, Kristen. Appreciate it.
Kimberly, hang on just a second.
Yes, you may.
Anybody up here have any real quick questions for the first part of the presentation? Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just so this, the last slide that you're on right now is the, so the five stars represent the all-American, we just didn't write that on there because of either costs and we just put the five stars in the pure Colorado, is that what we're doing?
Yeah, we kept it as simple as possible, because on I-25, you're at least going 85 miles an hour.
Yeah, for sure.
And you're not going to see a fine print.
Yeah, no, that, that works. I just wanted to make sure that, that was my understanding.
Yes. But if, you know, we wanted to put Fountain in AD 1888 or whatever, you know, the establishment date of the city was, those are things that could be adaptive to the signage product.
Oh yeah, I like that.
Yeah, very, very possible.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. I just think hopefully you see that there's a variety to the options that are put out there and a very good range between very minimalistic costs, a mid and upper range, but they're all very, still quite reasonable.
No, I'm thoroughly impressed with the presentation. I really appreciate it.
Well, good, good. The consultant team and the rest of the crew worked really hard over this last 18 months, I believe is where we're at now.
Anybody else up here? And we could do that without either one of the freestanding pieces, we could do that without either one of the freestanding pieces and just do the city of Fountain.
Yes, you could just put the box footer to update the existing I-25. Percy dot, we can't change locate, we can't get more signage on I-25. We have the placement we have, but we got really cost-effective to use the existing footers that are already there and create a new shell that goes over those footers. Okay, great.
Let's keep going.
All right. So we're going to wrap up here as we get closing to the ending of the findings report. As we said, we did work really close with our partner agencies. We don't do this kind of work scope in a bubble. CDOT was definitely a part of our steering committee. They never voted, they never worked through the design phase on what was more appropriate. What they were though, is a guidance and regulation compliance officer for the signage product. So where we could put those in certain right of ways, how we could be efficient in the navigational approach, even the classification of the signage. It allows it more elbow room to use than not for CDOT regulations, and that's what the guidance was under CDOT's partnership with us. Then we also worked with El Paso County Parks. We all benefit from the regional park right in the middle of the valley, but they also have some smaller community parks within unincorporated Security Wide Field. And we saw quite a few connection points and we worked really great with that liaison as well. Then that bridged us over to El Paso County Public Works. The most predominant footprint that really they needed to work with us on was on Fontaine Boulevard, because you go through this, you're in the city, you're out of the city, you're back in the city as you hit Powers Boulevard, and you really don't have any great egress or navigational awareness through that pattern, per scope. So understanding that the far left is the signage that was blessed by county parks and the far right is the signage that was blessed by El Paso County Streets Department. Limited footprints in those areas, the geography, because it's not on us to cover those areas. But the approach is, is that we would see it as a proposal, as a cost MOU, shared efficiencies, meaning hypothetically, the city does the implementation adhere to the design standards and then from there on, the county would take over the long-term maintenance and repair product within their jurisdiction. So that will come forth in the final master plan, but we really did really have good collaboration with our partners. We have written authorization to proceed, so at any point in the time that somebody else is in those positions, we can always go back to those references. And then also we have our new county commissioner that we would also work through at whatever future point that we're looking at. As a reference, this is a 10-year implementation plan approach. Anything in a county jurisdiction would be at the very latter half of that implementation. If the county sees a deemed need necessity earlier, then we would work with our partner through that effort. So just coming full circle, the purpose of the RFP and the funding of D-15 strategic plan was around supporting business development. And so we had some shout-outs from some community case studies that were really prevalent, that really showed some impact value. And so from there, we just wanted to echo these sentiments to you. Some saw a 12% increase in sales. Some also see that patrons explored 65% outside their boundaries, because they felt that they were in a safer jurisdiction, getting better navigation, better lighting, better awareness in the community. Nashville, Tennessee has grown its increase by 18% through wayfinding infrastructure. So really, the funding of the infrastructure will come back to the community through increased sales tax revenue. And so over the duration of the implementation cycle, hopefully the goal is that we break even or even exceeding the investment on the front end that we would do over that full cycle. These again are just snapshotting some of the benefits, increasing attendance, capturing some of that reco-leakage, which is delineated in the comprehensive land use plan. And then also encouraging people to patron more, right? Don't just make it a one-stop shop, make three stops in your route, because you have better awareness and navigation to what's available to you in the local market. So in conclusion, as we finish up phase three, the final findings for recommendation for adoption will come to you in the June cycle. I believe it's June 17th, we are already on the docket. Just reemphasizing, we always kept attuned to the four priorities as outlined by the public and endorsed by the steering committee through this endeavor. So in that final step in June, Kimberly and Nate will come back to you to conclude the final family design set. So you have five districts, the family set of signage per district, you'll have the full quantitative value specified thereof. It is truly at the department's discretion how they would like and what is the necessity for implementation. So out this 18 months, parks has been at the table, streets has been at the table, public works has been at the table, both in-house and as well as external partners. And so none of this should come as a surprise in the final master plan adoption in June. So the, the plan is a guidance tool, but it's not a force of arm tool. I just want to make sure that that is clear. And we also do identify that within the Safe Streets For All master plan effort that's underway, that there are 12 critical intersections that could highly benefit from better awareness of signage. And so all of those boilerplate into this master plan that will come to fruition in the June cycle. In addition, we got way more out of the RFP than what was presented to you tonight, and that's very much appreciated to Michael Baker's robust team. You know, we have a point of placement GIS system that'll show you all of the pinpoint locates and how we strategically address the implementation approach. That is an evergreen product that will not go away. We also have the big procurement guide. So at the time that streets or public works is ready to go out for RFP solicitation for this infrastructure funding, we have the tools to go ahead and put it into play. So these are all great enrichment materials that really get us the long game in the, in the design scope of this infrastructure wayfinding signage. Lastly, there will be two resolutions, part of that June proposal. It is required by CDOT that the city does formally adopt in a resolution form that the wayfinding master plan. So as we go after certain funding options, because not all this can be funded internally, by no means, that we do have this written on record and that will help robust our grant funding efforts in the fruition. So with that, we're at the end and we're more than glad to welcome any feedback or just general comments as we presented with you tonight.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for all the hard work and it's fun to see somebody enjoy their job. So tonight, you're just doing the presentation?
Mm-hmm.
And then you come back in June and we will adopt it through resolution.
Correct.
Not laying any money aside at that point, just adopting the study.
That is correct, but in that study, it'll show you the actual costs per district, per family set of design.
Right.
Which are all here too in that prior slide.
We're not spending the money at that meeting. We're not spending the money. Okay. I really do like what CDOT's been putting on our state highways. They've been working really hard on it. The last month, when you come up to an intersection and it has the name, a distance beforehand is telling you whether it's going to be a right turn or a left turn.
Yes.
And I think that really helps. And so I'm looking forward to some of that being incorporated with us too. So if you drive up Highway 85, you can see it in effect right now and other state highways.
I have noticed that as, as well, yes.
They're really nice. So I know Councilmember Rick told me earlier today, he wanted to comment on this, so to be sure and not forget about him, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm up in Minot, North Dakota for my grandson's graduation. And about a year ago, they implemented a signage program up here. For the most part, it's done well. However, some of the materials they've used have broken off due to wind and heavy snow. Obviously, we have a different environment down there in Colorado. But what I would ask city staff to do is reach out to some other cities who are using the signage that you all are recommending and ask them about the reliability of the materials, is it breaking off or the signs falling off, et cetera? What's it costing them in terms of time and dollars to maintain the signs? That's been the big complaint up here. But other than that, I have no other comments. Thank you for your presentation and I do appreciate it.
You're welcome. Enjoy your time too. So I can address that a little bit. One of the most recent ones that has signage programs that's gone up in Colorado that I did, that I would say is in one of our most extreme environments, is up in Leadville. And those signs have been up since 2018, some went up in 2017. And they're same materiality, even some of that sort of corrugated looking steel as part of their palette as well. So I think that would be a really good case study to use as durability, that these will be durable. So a lot of my, I mean, over 50% of the work that I do is up in the mountains. So the front range, we have the winds and they're serious, they're very serious. But as far as like extreme elevation, extreme climate, those are, that's where I, you know, learned to be very careful about what I spec as far as materiality goes. It's also really hard to maintain things in those environment. The winter, the wintertime is long and the summer is short. So for example, I'm working up in Mount Crested Butte right now, we're on phase three of implementation, same materiality there too. So those first three phases have been up. The first one went up three years ago and they look brand new and that's great, because that's what we want. We want them to look good for a very long time with very little effort put in to achieve that. So, okay, that's all I got. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from anyone up here? Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you so much for this presentation. It's very informative. I really like it. I appreciate all the hard work that's been put into it. You did mention about the cost, and so, you said next in June, we'll find out what the cost per design. Is, am I correct?
So, you already had an outline in this presentation of what the per signage cost point was and is. I'm trying to get there fast enough for you. It's a thick slide deck, so it's going to take a little bit. It's at the early half. Bezzie, can you get me to the first, like, page five? Would be awesome. I know, it's a very large graphic file, just so I can pinpoint it for you. It should be right about there. Yes, okay. So, here's your, here's the definite swag. So, we walked you through priorities one through five, one being vehicular, five being the interstate gateway, okay? For example, if you just did the box that replaces over-existing footers, per box is 25,000. If you add on any of the accoutrement design, which the fan or the fountain effect, that increases that amount, based on the design that is chosen at that future point. Oh, I just lost it. There we go. For vehicular, at the first priority set, if you remember the scale that she showed you that had four visions, one was very stylistic, and the far right was just a pole with some signage, that's your swag of cost. 1,200 is the pole with just a flag for direction, and the more stylistic is the upper end of the 6,000 per sign. Now, granted, the more design-esque is only really five business districts, two points of entry, it's only 10 signs, okay? So, there's not a max density in that particular mid-range cost of signage, is what I would like to advise you of.
Okay. And so, the materials. So, if, if we pick a low, median, mean, or high, are we going to purchase the materials for the 10 signs at cost right now, or?
No.
And you said over 10?
No.
Okay.
We are not. So, what you're doing in June is we come back to you for the second phase, which is the formal adoption process of the master plan and design scope. You are just adopting that proposal. Behind-the-scenes staff under the new strategic objectives, one of those objectives is implement certain areas of the wayfinding infrastructure. So, economic development, we'll work with Streets, we'll work with El Paso County as well, just to make sure we address some of the critical needs of infrastructure, and that comes back to council as a totally separate recommendation item at the cost of funding as appropriated.
And that's after matching grants and all that stuff?
Correct, correct. We do get a list. That list is in the master plan. Just as FIRA supported this initial plan design scope, FIRA has signaled that they're able to support additional needs under signage when a firm need is addressed under infrastructure proposal approach. So, we have to put a swag on what we're striving for, and so, in your master plan, we're saying over 10 years, this is our swag of what we're hopefully to implement.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions up here? No? Any comments from staff? Nope. Okay. Thank you, Kimberly.
Okay. Well, thank you so much for your time.
Is this going to be, John, where is this going to be found? If citizens want to review it, and I assume they would contact you, Kimberly, with any questions?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear your full question.
I would assume citizens would contact you if they had questions about this.
Oh, most definitely.
Okay. And is this going to be available anywhere?
Yeah, I'll speak with Kimberly, and we'll make sure and get it posted so citizens can review it.
Okay.
For sure.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alrighty. That takes us on to boards, commissions, and committee reports. We'll start with Mr. Evans and just go down the row.
I don't have anything tonight, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, City Council. I just wanted to briefly address some recent news that's come out about local municipalities joining in a litigation effort against the state regarding a slew of laws that were passed, many in 2024, related to affordable housing and the executive order by which the governor tied those, compliance with those statutes to receipt of grant funding. I wanted to make sure that the community and the council were aware that some of these, some of these different laws don't actually apply to the City of Fountain due to the size, the nature of the things, as particular as the transit area being less than 75 acres, things to do with having, while we appear on the Department of Local Affairs website for the law related to minimum requirements for parking, a close look at their, their interactive map shows that the areas by which we would have to comply with that law are on I-25 and in the parking lot of a Walmart. So, we're, we're not actually subject to those, to those regulations despite appearing on the list of subject communities. I think the point behind all of this report to council is that participation for Fountain in that, in that joint action against the state would look very different, partly because unlike those communities that are participating, we are not subject to every single one of the laws that was announced in the executive order. So, whether or not we would have, City of Fountain would have a right to intervene in that lawsuit would be a question that the court would have to decide. And ultimately, what it comes down to is a lot of expense in paying an attorney, probably outside council, who would be devoted to handling any litigation related to, to that. I can answer any, any questions about this, but really, this was just an opportunity I wanted to take to educate council and the community about the limitations on the applicability of, of these laws and how they affect this community.
So, if a citizen were to say, why aren't you joining the lawsuit that those cities are doing, it would, the answer would, the simple answer would just be, the laws they're suing over don't apply to our municipality.
I would say that not all of the laws that they're suing over apply to our municipality. And frankly, if those communities are successful with or without our participation, we receive the same benefit.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Going down the row?
Nothing this evening, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a quick update on FD staffing. I know I've been asked several times about that, so I want to give a quick update on that. Over the last 30 to 60 days, we've had a number of vacancies occur, whether through firefighters leaving for various reasons. We have been able to make some headway and keep pace with those vacancies. We've had a number of recruiting efforts, a couple of tryouts, and we've got right now hiring lists to hire both firefighter EMTs and paramedics. And so, we've been able to hire one of each so far, since the last staffing briefing that I gave you. We have a lieutenant's promotional assessment center going on right now, this week, that'll be completed this week, and then a driver, driver's assessment center next week. So, we're keeping pace. However, there have been a number of vacancies that have occurred over the last couple of months, so just wanted to bring you up to date on that. Other than that, business as usual.
Thank you. Chief?
Morning, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of quick things. One, we two are running or have ran two promotional processes, so we have some new young leadership coming into the police department, so we're looking forward to that and getting them ready to go. And just a shout-out to our school resource officers, successful 2024, 2025 school year. District Eight and us always work well together, and they finally wrapped everything up last Saturday with graduation, so Streets will be a little quieter traffic-wise for the next couple of months, but just a shout-out to those school resource officers and having a great year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll continue on with Item Five, Correspondence, Comments, and Ex officia. I'll do in the room first, and then I won't forget you, Councilmember Rick. I'll come to you. So, I'll start on the right here. Councilmember Duncan?
Thank you. Just wanted to say congratulations to all of the graduates of 2025. Your hard work has paid off. Reminiscing about graduates of last year, so it was good to see all of the graduates and all of the connections that they're making to have, maybe the parents now will say that I got to raise and get the kids out of the house. I've attended several events this month at Fort Carson. I attended the ribbon-cutting ceremony to celebrate the construction of 56 townhomes that will be incorporated into the installation of Arapahoe Village Community. And this, these new townhomes will provide housing for 56 Fort Carson families, and they will consist of three- and four-bedroom floor plans. So, and some of them meet ADA compliance. So, the ones that had ADA compliance were two-car garages, and these were very nice homes. I was impressed with all of the safety features they had. It was really nice to have our soldiers come home to very nice homes. We had also the outgoing of Division Chief Staff of Colonel Sean P. Lucas and outgoing Division Command of Sergeant May Capore. Am I saying that right, John? Yeah, he said it. So, honored to be amongst the soldiers, families, and community leaders who gathered to honor and be fairway to senior leaders and spouses to the dedicated service. We were in and out of there really fast. If you were late, you missed it, so that was awesome. I also attended the Fallen Soldiers Memorial. Again, I've never seen the plaques. They have a wall of plaques when you go to the event that's inside, and they have the pictures, which really brings it home to you. You know, you get to see the faces of the, of the soldiers. So, that was really heartbreaking for me to see them, but it was also just to be able to look them in their faces and their eyes, and some pictures have family members, so that was really, I was really honored to be a part of that. I also attended the Armed Forces Luncheon, and that was honoring enlisted service members, and that also was a great event. They had a lot of Fort Carson there, mostly Fort Carson, a very small pinch of Peterson, but mostly Fort Carson, so that was really nice to be at. We had the Home Buyers 101. That was a great informational. Lots of homeowners came out, different times. We had one homeowner here from Fountain that had already been pre-approved, and what was awesome about that event was she got to ask questions about what she was signing, what she was being approved for, and I also learned something about layering, what they call layering, and you can layer different types of grants to get homes, and I didn't know that. So, I wish I'd have known that when I was getting a home, because that's really nice to have. I also attended the roundtable with Senator Bennett. He discussed persistent challenges facing veterans, including access to veteran affairs, mental health support, and navigating federal benefits. It was really refreshing to actually hear what they had to say and what they care about, and nothing on my part, no intention was to use this as a political thing. These were real heroes, saying what they are experiencing. I saw real tears, and we really have to do better by our veterans. The last thing I have is that we have a significant number of foster families here in Fountain. Foster kids have a lot to put up with in life, and one of those things is they have to move a lot, and when they move, it's hard to keep up with what they have. So, I have partnered with Fostering Hope Foundation, and you can make a huge difference. I am asking for you to bring either donating a new suitcase or a duffel bag, and can drop it off at the Old Town Coffee Shop, and that's at 105 South Santa Fe here in Fountain. So, these are to help most of the kids leave homes with their things in garbage bags, and I just want to make that experience better for the kids, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Hursberg?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So, I also attended the Mountain Post Memorial at Fort Carson, and they just, they really know how to do it right with their honors there. Attended the monthly Fountain Urban Renewal Meeting. Also want to thank Ms. Bailey for taking the time to do one-on-ones as far as wayfinding to kind of help us better understand ahead of the presentation. That was really helpful. I also walked Ventana Discourse. So, if you guys aren't aware, we do have a new discourse going in. It's there in Ventana, and they'll be finishing it this summer, so I hope to, people will be visiting that.
Thank you. Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just want to make sure that, I had a resident who dropped off some information to my home about our last meeting at ADUs, Mr. Greg Stark, and he just wanted to provide that information. I put those all in your boxes. I hope that you received that, and then I made sure that I gave that to the engineer and to Todd and Scott, and they also did a digital copy and uploaded it, so we all received that, too, as well. So, I just appreciate him dropping off the information and being engaged in our, in our community.
Thank you. Councilmember Estes?
Just a couple of things. The museum is co-hosting a commemoration of the Big Train Blast of 1888 with Peaks and Pines Brewery and Friends of Fairview Cemetery. It's happening this week, the 28th, 29th, and 30th, down at the brewery. Stop on by and learn about the disaster that about annihilated our town, but we came through. There is a coloring contest involved with that for adults and kids, so take a look at that. The museum will be hosting its first talk of the summer on June 14th, and the theme this summer is the Families of Fountain. And our first talk will be presented on the Torbit and Toothman families on June 14th at 11:00 a.m. Also want to give a shout-out to the Fountain Valley Senior Center, who will be celebrating their 50th anniversary this year in June, June 25th, and be on the lookout for more things about that coming out, but that's a great achievement for them to have made the 50-year anniversary. So, just a shout-out to them.
Thank you. Councilmember Geek?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We had PPACG, where we're continuing to wait for some of the cuts that are going to come from the federal and the state government, to see how that affects our transportation and, and different budgets that we handle there. I do know CDOT said the amount of money they're getting this year, a one-third of it has to go towards multimodal options within communities. So, if you're not happy with how the governor's dividing that out, you might let him know that we'd like our roads fixed, rather than another sidewalk somewhere. So, we have a new business in town, Paloma Teen Center and Counseling on Highway 85 in the Walmart Shopping Center, kind of by the Dollar General, so I'm excited to see them there. I stopped by their grand opening and welcomed them, went to CML in Woodland Park and met with some other officials and seen what's going on in our area. Also went to the Fort Carson Memorial, and the VFW and Legion did a great Memorial Day program yesterday, attended the Front Range Passenger Rail Zoom Meeting, and congratulate the rodeo here on their 76th year. We really have the senior center 50 years, rodeo 76 years. People are really looking ahead and doing some quality things in our community years ago. So, before we go on the consent agenda, I am going to take a short break. It is 7:20, so we will be back at 7:25. so we will be back at 7:25. This is on to item A, New Business: Consideration of Items Removed From Consent Agenda. And that would be item B, Resolution Number 25-015, a resolution to approve administrative support to the General Facility Construction Intergovernmental Support Agreement between Fountain and Fort Carson. So Mr. Trilch, just take a few minutes and let everybody know what IGSA's are and why we're doing this.
Sure, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm John Trilch, City Administrative Services Director and also the responsible for our Military Partnerships Program. So just for review for everybody and those who may be listening, our intergovernmental support agreements are a federal legislative mechanism that allows local communities like Fountain to provide services on military installations. The city of Fountain has been participating in this program. We call it, the acronym is IGSA's, so we've been participating in the IGSA program for years. We have three of these agreements with Fort Carson. One of them is what we call the General Facility Construction IGSA. This was an agreement that council approved back in 2021, which allows Fountain to provide construction support on the Army post. The way that we provide that support mainly is through the procurement, administration, and management of contracts. So for instance, we have primarily two, what we call multiple award task order contracts. They're general construction contractors that do the work on Fort Carson for us. And we provide a wide variety of different services over there on the post, and so many, many projects. Over the years, that particular IGSA has been very, very successful. In fact, we were recognized in 2022 with an Army Community Partnerships Award for that IGSA. And so the volume of projects that we're doing on Fort Carson has gone up tremendously. Last year, for example, we did 10 projects on Fort Carson, which amounted to about $1 million in services on the post. This year, we are absolutely exceeding that. We're already arriving at the $2 million mark for services. And Fort Carson has indicated that they want to scale up and increase the volume even further. So we have an agreement with them right now, this mutual goal to achieve $5 million worth of services and construction services on the post. So in order to do that, we've got to kind of scale up how we're providing those services. And one of them is, and what this resolution is this evening, is an administrative action to be sure that council approves both the city manager and his designated, which is myself, as your Military Partnerships Manager, the ability to continue to facilitate these contracts that support this particular IGSA on Fort Carson. Back in 2021, when you passed the resolution that approved the agreement, you approved it for up to $2 million a year, because that's what we thought the scale would be. You know, those are many years ago, and it's just been so successful that we've exceeded that. Looking at $5 million this year, and they've even signaled to us that maybe even more. So as part of the administrative housekeeping of this and to enable us to continue to provide this expedient and cost-effective service to Fort Carson, this resolution is asking that council increase the amount of contract support that we can provide that the city manager or his designated myself can approve without having come back for council or to council in order to do these construction projects. And so it is just specific just to this IGSA. This $5 million is just for projects that support what we are doing on post. As an example of that, recently council approved, considered, and approved a contract to redo a pickleball court through Parks and Recreation that Gordy McCormick brought you. Gordy's actually using one of our multiple award task order contracts that we have in Fort Carson. But the way those contracts are written, and that council originally approved in 2021, they allow us to do things in Fountain. But because of the threshold and because it's not specific to the IGSA, Gordy brought that back to council to approve. So that's an example of how this is very limited in its scope of just focusing on the intergovernmental support agreement. This is no financial commitment at this point. Last year, council, you approved $3 million in the budget to support this particular IGSA. I watch and monitor that burn rate of that money very, very closely. If we do meet the $5 million goal, I'll be coming back to you during the supplemental process to request more funds budgetarily at that time. So this is just administrative to just ensure that both Scott and myself can sign off and move forward with contracts and continue to provide support to Fort Carson.
And John, I just want to make sure that we confirm those, but those monies that are budgeted are reimbursed by Fort Carson in full.
Yeah, thank you for that point, too. So that's another important point. This is 100% reimbursed by Fort Carson. So that, that $2 million that I mentioned right now, the $5 million here, that project support is completely reimbursed by Fort Carson. And the benefit to the city is that we are reimbursed for all of our overhead management expenses and associated fees. So for example, right now, we are at about $2 million in support we're providing through this IGSA. The city has received or will receive, once we're paid by the Department of Defense, right to date, $174,000 in revenue into the city's general fund. And if we achieve that $5 million that we have set a mutual goal, we could anticipate a little over $400,000 in revenue into the city, into the general fund. And so that's on top of the full reimbursement for those expenses. So thank you, Todd, for bringing that up, too.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, I appreciate that, John. I appreciate that, you know, as a city, you know, we only have certain ways to make, bring revenue into the city. I appreciate that we're being proactive and looking at other ways to be able to do that. You know, I see this as definitely a win-win for the city and how we can definitely help our partners at Fort Carson and possibly extending this even a little bit larger. But you know, that's just, you know, things as we look further into the future, being proactive. I really appreciate that, John, and your presentation and offices, and Todd and Scott, what you guys do. I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you.
Izzy, ma'am?
Okay, there we go. All right. Councilmember Hersberg?
Thank you. Yeah, and also thank you, John, for that. And in our, when we discussed this before, you mentioned that the funds were not included in Tabor, so that was a good point to bring up.
Yes, that's correct. So because the, because all of the money that comes back to the city is federal money, it's not subject to Tabor. And so that the revenue that I mentioned, in this case, right now, today, of $174,000 and potentially, you know, over $400,000 just for this IGSA, because we have our two others as well, would not be, go against our Tabor limit.
Thank you. All right. Anybody else? Any questions, comments? Okay, I just want to make sure everybody understands we are not raising the amount of money for everything the city manager can sign up to $5 million. It's only for this IGSA contract, so we can just essentially move a little faster.
That's correct, and that's one of the benefits of this IGSA, why they appreciate the service so much and why the volume has gone up. If they use their contracting office, for instance, their contracting office standard from the time they receive a request for a project to the time that they get a proposal is about four months. We are delivering project proposals to Fort Carson when we receive a request in as short as 11 days.
That's great. Thank you very much. Appreciate that. And that has really grown, so thank you. And getting ready to grow more. All right, what would council like to do with item number 25-015? Councilmember Hersberg?
I move to approve item dash 25, 25-015.
Okay, we have a motion, and Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
Okay, we have your motion in a second. Any further deliberation? Any questions from anyone in the audience? I should address you by name when you're the only one there, huh? All right. Seeing none, please vote.
Mayor Protemrick, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have seven yes. Motion carried.
Okay, thank you. That takes us on to city council agenda requests. Are there any city council agenda requests? Councilmember Rick?
Nothing tonight, Madam Mayor.
Okay, that takes us on to item 10, Announcement of an Executive Session.
I've spoken to City Attorney Strider, and the item B, the two items for legal advice, are going to be removed from the agenda this evening, so only have one item and approval of the minutes. Yes. No, the minutes and item, the first one, item E, Purpose of Determining Positions. Oh, sorry. Okay, so the bottom two are going to be removed, the second, the top two are going to stay. Okay? All right. In accordance with the city charter and the Colorado Open Meetings Act, the city council open session is to determine whether it will hold a closed executive session. A closed executive session may be held upon affirmative vote of two-thirds of the quorum present. If consent to the closed executive session is not given, the items may be discussed in open session or withdrawn from, withdrawn from consideration. Purpose of the executive session is pursuant to CRS Section 24-6-4024 for the purpose of review, approval, and amendment of the executive sessions, CRS Section 24-64024E for the purpose of determining positions relative to managers, relative to matters that may be subject to negotiations, developing strategy for negotiations, and/or instructing negotiators regarding a cell tower lease.
That is the recommendation from our city clerk. What would council like to do? Councilmember Hersberg?
I move we go on to executive session.
Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Any deliberation? Seeing none, please vote.
Mayor Protemrick, how do you?